I call this Altoona City Council Meeting to order Monday, September 12th at 6:00 PM. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the roll call, please?
Councilman Beatty. Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilman Carper.
Here.
Councilman Ellis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here. Okay, our first presentation this evening will be a proclamation presented to Julie Toriano Good and Kathy Sherden of the Brian Morton Foundation for National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month and Gold Ribbon Day and in honor and memory of Don Morton. If you would please join me at the podium. Whereas September is Childhood Cancer Awareness Month throughout the nation, and we recognize the courage of the children who have battled or are currently battling cancer, with special recognition to all of the survivors. And whereas, over the past 20 years, all types of childhood cancer have increased in children and adolescents, affects all ethnic, gender, and socioeconomic groups, is considered to be the number-one disease threatening our children, affects 250,000 newly diagnosed children worldwide as they undergo treatment each year, and the impact of the diagnosis produces multiple challenges for a family. Unfortunately, childhood cancer research is vastly and consistently underfunded, with only 4% of federal government cancer research funding going to childhood cancer research. And whereas, the statistics hit home with more than 30 students from the Altoona Area School District diagnosed with cancer in the past 20 years. And whereas, one of those Altoona Area School District students is 15-year-old Ty Maori, who lost his courageous battle with cancer in April of 2022. Ty joins Kaylee Cruz, Emma Acker, Kiara Sherden, Maddie Shura, Erin Dodson, Katie Mills, Amelia Sharer, Eli Garrett, and Heather Miller, other local children, who, like Ty, inspired many before losing their battles with cancer. And whereas, another one of the Altoona Area High School students was Brian Morton, who inspired the creation of the Brian Morton Foundation after he lost his earthly battle with cancer on February 15th, 2003. And whereas, the Brian Morton Foundation has embraced the issue of childhood cancer with collaboration between many local organizations, including the Altoona Area School District, and have helped to ease the burden for our AASD students and their families, as well as children and their families in the surrounding areas. And whereas, we also honor and remember Don Morton, who passed away on June 3rd, 2022. Don's contributions to our community as a teacher for 34 years in the Altoona Area School District and as founder and president of the Brian Morton Foundation leave a legacy of caring for area families affected by childhood cancer. Don Morton worked tirelessly to make a difference in many lives and to raise awareness of childhood cancer. Don will be missed tremendously by so many, and her untimely death is a great loss to our community. Now, therefore, I, Matthew Pacifico, Mayor of the City of Altoona, Pennsylvania, do hereby proclaim September 2022 as National Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Altoona and encourage all citizens, businesses, and organizations to support childhood cancer. And in recognition of the gold ribbon as the symbol of childhood cancer, I do hereby proclaim Friday, September 16th, 2022, as Gold Ribbon Day in the City of Altoona in honor and memory of all childhood cancer warriors. The gold ribbon serves as hope that together, we can reach the day when every child with cancer is guaranteed a cure.
Thank you, Mayor, and the City Council. My name is Kathy Sherden. I'm the Secretary for the Brian Morton Foundation. I lost my granddaughter five years ago to cancer at the age of 16. She's been here many Septembers giving out gold ribbons. And as Mayor said, we lost our founder and president, Don Morton, on June 3rd, and it is a great sadness to lose her bright light in this world. She always said, "It is better to light a candle than curse the darkness." And she certainly did work tirelessly to make a difference in the lives of many, many, many people, as a teacher and, of course, as helping the children that have cancer. The Brian Morton Foundation Board will continue Don's light, her fight to find a cure, help children battling cancer, and provide the Brian Morton Memorial Scholarship. And now, also, we're going to have a Don Morton Memorial Scholarship for Altoona Area High School graduates. I would like to introduce some of our families that are here. We have Brian and Janet Maori, who lost Ty on April 14th of this year. He was 15-years-old, and he was a bright light also. We have Melissa and Kenzie Cruz, who lost their daughter and big sister Kaylee to cancer February 12th of 2021. She was 11-years-old, and her smile was contagious. We have Bonnie and Becca Matus. Becca is 16-years-old, and she's in remission. She's a very talented artist, and she would like to present her artwork of Kaylee to her mom, Melissa. So, Becca, could you give Melissa your artwork there, please? Very talented. Look at that. And then, we have our board members here. We have Sylvia Maddox. She's our treasurer. Sylvia is clear in the backseat there. And we have Jess Folchero. She's our board member. And then, our new president is Julie Toriano Good, and she'll just say a few words, too, if that's okay. And thank you so much for the proclamation.
Thank you for having us here today. We appreciate your time, and we also appreciate your donation that we just received. Thank you. It's because of this community that we have been able to continue Don's goal of helping every child that is struggling. You heard the statistics. The numbers are crazy different. When we grew up, there were no kids with cancer. Now, there's hospitals for kids with cancer. And it's very scary, and it's very sad, as you can see from some of the examples here we have, that the loss is overwhelming, as you can imagine. But we have a few things we're planning this year. This September, we always have our football game at Altoona, the Gold Ribbon Game. It is this Friday. Please join us and come out. And Don will be the honorary captain this year. Although she won't be with us in body, she will be with us in spirit. Next Monday, at the Fieldhouse, will be the Erin Dodson Volleyball Game, too. Also, please, you're welcome to join us for those two games. That's fun. We also have a library display, and we just had a curve game last month. So, you know, we're trying to continue it. It's a lot of, it's a little, it's a new year, so we're kind of in the works. But thank you so much for this opportunity for recognizing our children. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, our next presentation is the 2023 Minimum Municipal Obligation Certification from Omar Strom, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council members, you have before you the minimum municipal obligation for all three of the city two councils prior to the end of September. So I'll go over this briefly with you, the payroll for this year. A normal cost as a percentage of payroll, which comes from the actuarial evaluation reports for each plan dated January 1st of last year. An estimated normal cost, which consists of Item 1 times Item 2, payroll times the normal cost. An amortization amount, which is taken, again, from the actuarial evaluation report from January 1st of last year. An estimated administrative expense, best estimate for next year. A total of the financial requirements, which is a total of the normal cost, the amortization amount, and the estimated administrative expenses. Step 7 is an estimated employee contributions. They're based on 5% for the police and fire, and then 6% for the non-uniform plan. Normal funding adjustment, which we do not have for any of these plans, to arrive at the total minimum municipal obligation for each plan. And if you look at that, the police plan is $2,692,596. The non-uniform plan, $692,821. And the fire pension plan, $2,303,957, for a total amount of $5,689,44, which will be included in the 2023 budget. Just a little note, the funding of that MMO comes from three separate sources. One is the Act 205 Pension Tax, a transfer from the fund that's generated from that tax. The amount of money we received in state aid for pensions. And also, now, under the Auditor General's most recent ruling, a certain amount that comes from the general fund that aligns with the amount of payroll that's estimated for next year. So, that's what I had to present, and if you have any questions about anything, I can certainly try to answer it for you.
Omar, is this, do you know if this is an increase from last year?
It is. I don't have the exact amount. I don't think it's a significant increase, but it is an increase.
Okay. Any more questions for Omar?
No, thanks.
Thank you, Omar. This time, we'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, may come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you please keep your comments to under five minutes. Okay, we will close the floor for public comment and move on to the resolutions.
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council Meeting held Monday, August 8, 2022. Item B is approving the request of Apple Pennsylvania LLC to transfer liquor license number R-21099 from Logan Township for use within the City of Altoona at 317 West Plank Road, Altoona, PA. Item C is amending the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program, transferring $500 from the Altoona Housing Authority Fairview Hills Playground Revitalization Project to the Single Family Homeowner Rehabilitation Program. Item D is approving the sale of the following capital assets by internet auction site Govdeals.com in accordance with Chapter 295-3 of the City of Altoona Code of Ordinances, disposition of surplus real and personal property, a 2010 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper, and a 2010 Timco Street Sweeper. Item E is awarding the Stormwater Improvement Walnut and Oak Avenues Project to deal construction of Glen Hope, Pennsylvania in the amount of $527,975 payable from ARPA funds, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is approving a repository bid in the amount of $300 submitted by Timothy Wills of Altoona for property located at 4800 to 4806 Park Place, and further authorizing the city manager to execute the taxing district form. Are there any additions or deletions, or anything that needs to be pulled for separate vote? Hearing none, I'll call for the consent vote. Councilman Beatty.
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Yes.
Councilman Carper.
Yes.
Councilman Ellis.
Yes.
Councilman Ickes.
Yes.
Councilman Kelly. And Mayor Pacifico.
Yes.
And the vote, the consent vote passes seven to zero. We have one ordinance for introduction, and it is an ordinance of... It's not working here. Having problems. There we go. It's an ordinance of the City of Altoona amending the code of the City of Altoona to amend Chapter 405 entitled Lease and/or Conveyance of City-Owned Lands to authorize conveyance of the following city-owned land: 2206 10th Avenue, 1930 11th Avenue, 215 6th Street, 211 to 13 6th Street, 523 8th Avenue, 3508 Oak Avenue, 3504 Oak Avenue, 3500 Oak Avenue, 3428 Oak Avenue, 3424 Oak Avenue, 3420 Oak Avenue, 3416 Oak Avenue, 1520 to 22 North 8th Avenue, 318 North 5th Avenue, 317 Park Place, 1018 North 6th Avenue, to the Redevelopment Authority of Altoona in the amount of $1 each. Repeal all other ordinances or parts thereof in conflict therewith, and provide severability of provisions and provide an effective date. Is there a council member willing to introduce this ordinance?
So moved.
This ordinance was introduced by Councilman Butterbaugh.
I'm sorry, I have to go back. I forgot to announce that we had an executive session after last month's meeting to discuss real estate and personnel, so I will reopen the floor for public comment again. And we will close the floor for public comment. Now, we'll go into the city manager update. Omar?
Just a couple of items to update you on. One is that Representatives Trans Associates, which is conducting the parking study of the downtown area, will be in town on Thursday doing some parking counts in the city's downtown. They will also be back on Friday, September 23rd, to do parking counts in conjunction with a concert, a Zack King concert, that will be taking place in Heritage Plaza, to get a sense of the needs during a special event such as a concert. Also, the mayor, Diana and I, last week, took a field trip to Pittston, Pennsylvania. For those not familiar with Pittston, it is situated right between Scranton to the north and Wilkes-Barre to the south. It is a small city, really about the size of Juniata from a geographic perspective. The trip was, you know, fairly long, just kind of a one-day thing, and the weather wasn't very pleasant. It rained most of the time. But I think I can speak for everybody that went on the trip, that we really came away feeling pretty good about the trip and what we learned there. And what's happening in Pittston and how they conduct business in many ways, I think, will be transferable or applicable to this city. Also, there's certain things they do that we definitely wouldn't transfer to this city. But nonetheless, I'll be updating all of council on that in more detail in the coming, in the near future. Lastly, I just want to, I'm sure you all know this, but after 24 years of service, Fire Chief Howman is retiring. His last day is on Wednesday. I want to personally thank him for his service, his professionalism, and his dedication to the city and the fire department. I really appreciate working with him. Also, want to tell you that Deputy Chief Adam Free, who was sitting in the back of the room, will be serving as the interim fire chief while we undergo a process of fulfilling or filling the position in the department. Thank you, Chief Howman. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Before we get into the council discussion items, Chief, would you join me at the podium? I'd like to present you with something on behalf of council. Chief, on behalf of council, I'd like to present you with this key to the city and certificate of appreciation for your years of service to the city and everything you've done for the residents and for the city. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for the recognition. I certainly appreciate it. And I tell you, it's tough after hearing the cancer with the kids and all that they go through, and I certainly don't want to try to overshadow anything with that. So, I mean, it's a hard thing to deal with. So, I mean, this is, you know, bittersweet for me. 24 years, I put a lot of heart and soul into the city and its fire protection. But everybody has a time when it's time to move on, and there's opportunities, and I've got some good opportunities moving forward, so you can't pass them up. So, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Chief Howman, congratulations and best of luck to you and your new venture, and wish you the best. You're certainly not retiring. You're just moving on to a new chapter, so congratulations. Mayor, I just would, just a quick comment. I had the opportunity to not only attend the car show Labor Day weekend, but I put my car in it, and I was, it was amazing, the number of cars that rented and the number of people downtown. I just wish they wouldn't put my little '77 MG next to, like, a big GTO or something, because it just, you know. But it was fun. It was an amazing crowd. It was really nice. So, if that's something you haven't attended in the past, you should look to go next year Labor Day weekend, so thank you.
Glad you had a good time.
Yeah, it was fun.
Councilman Carper.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out very quickly that there's been a lot of, there's been a rise in the number of spotted lanternfly sightings in and around the city. And as a reminder to everybody out there, they're super invasive, and the best thing that you can do is know what they look like and kill them on sight, just as a friendly reminder that they need to go. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh.
My neighbor's up to over 300 lanternflies now, so. Hey, thank you, Chief Howman, for your service, and I thought you did a really excellent job leading the fire department. When you came in, that was a tough time, because the finances did some amazing work, and I really wish to just wish you the best and pray all the best for you in your next endeavor.
Councilman Ickes.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'll echo the comments here among the governing body. Wish you, Lisa and your family, all the best going forward. Thanks for your dedication to the city and your service to our country. Thank you. Kind of on the heels of the 21st anniversary of 9/11 and the presentation this evening on behalf of childhood cancer, just a stark reminder of how precious human life is. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ellis.
Great points. Chief, I want to thank you for your service to the city. I think you took the department to some pretty high levels, and you had big shoes to fill when you took that job, and I think you did a great job.
Councilman Beatty.
Thanks for your service, Tim, and just wish you luck in your new endeavor.
And I would just like to announce that in the coming month or so, we will be looking to expand the LERTA zone in the city to encompass the entire city as well as residential properties. So, that's something where the county commissioners and the school board will be getting together to have a public meeting next month about that. And that's all I have. And we'll move on to questions from the media now.
Thank you. Tom, does the law, the liquor control, or the liquor law, allow any license to be transferred from any municipality to another municipality throughout the whole state, or just?
That's like within, as Councilman Kelly mentioned, that is, the statute pertains to within the county.
Okay. Omar, the, do you know the percentage of funding for the pension plans?
We are minimally distressed, Bill. I do not know the specific liability and percentage of funding for any or all of the plans, but if you need that information, I can gather it and get it back to everybody in the near future.
Oh, the three funding sources for the MMO?
Yes.
Do you know the amounts for each of those?
Well, we don't. What we get from the state aid from pension, I believe we budgeted about $1.7 million. The state does a calculation, probably right about now, in the very near future, where they will make an announcement, and it's based on the number of units that participate in the pension plan. So, it would be about $1.7 million. The amount that's going to come from the general fund will be a percentage of payroll, and there'll be a percentage of next year's payroll as we budget it. Of course, we don't know that number yet, but we will by the time we introduce a budget. And then, the remainder, which is actually the largest amount, will come from the city's Act 205 Reserve Fund. And those three components will actually fund the minimum obligation to the plan.
Okay. What does a unit mean?
Participants.
Lives.
Oh, individual people.
Yeah, right.
And the, do you know what the percentage of payroll, yeah, what the percentage of payroll that is to be funded with the general fund or through the general fund?
I believe it's about 15%.
Is that a new requirement?
Yeah, so, a couple of years ago, the Auditor General came through, and they do a biannual audit, and they came up with a finding that they had never had before, even though they had been through here biannually, you know, for the last 20-some, five-odd years, related to how the city, what the contribution, what the source of the contribution to the MMO's payment was. And it was their finding that we needed to look back at when that tax was implemented. It's kind of complicated, Bill, but, which was back in 1997, I believe. believe. So we used the pay, the records that we could scrape up to make that calculation, and that's, that's what we use.
But was there some problem with using the Act two oh five tax to fund the?
So the finding was that we needed to maintain the level of funding from our general fund that was in existence at that time. That was never, it was never done at that time, or had never been done since, but it was something that, that they were actually looking at around the state and other, other municipalities. So we weren't, we weren't, we weren't alone in that regard, but certainly, you know, we, we wanted to implement the finding as quickly as we could, or the results of the finding as quickly as we could, and we did.
So, so the fifteen percent is fifteen percent of the MMO has to be funded by the?
No. Fifteen percent of the overall payroll, and again, it's, it's not specifics, it's fifteen point some odd percent, that of the overall payroll needs to be set aside to be part of how the city funds its obligations to its pension plan.
Wow, that sounds like a huge amount.
Well, it's, you know, as, as payroll increases, it increases, obviously.
Oh, okay. Nate, is the, the Stormwater Project Walnut Avenue, is that, is that designed to eliminate flooding that has happened, or not?
I think it's just nuisance flows in the neighborhood and icing concerns in the wintertime, just getting the flows to the subsurface.
Okay. Can somebody tell, I don't know who, would tell me the significance of the ordinance that was introduced?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a variety of city-owned property that's being transferred for disposition to the Redevelopment Authority. So as you know, Bill, the Redevelopment Authority has been in, in kind of hiatus until recently. Diana and, and the staff in the Community Development Department did a lot of research on the various properties that the city has, and it's, given the fact that the, the Redevelopment Authority is now also the land bank, the idea is that some of that property is best placed in the, in the possession of the Redevelopment Authority for potential development or what have you. And it would, would enable people, if they're interested in purchasing that, those properties, to be able to purchase it for, without going through a bidding process, which is what is required for city property that's worth more than six thousand dollars.
So, right now, if there's city property, if it's worth more than six thousand, it has to go to bid?
Yes.
Are, are these, are these properties that are listed in this ordinance?
Yes.
Are they, are they like all together, or are they like, or are they just kind of scattered all over?
They're scattered sites.
Okay. Guess that's all I have. Thank you.
This meeting is adjourned.